And we've got Commissioner Ritz is here.
I'm here.
The mayor, and please stand. We're going to start the Monday, October 5th town meeting. Please stand and sit for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Upcoming meetings. Citizens Advisory Meeting will be Tuesday, October 20th at 7:30 at 22 East Main Street, which is the old town office. This is the deputy's office. Planning Commission Meeting will be Monday, October 26th, 7:30 PM, and that will be Zoom. And the town, next town council meeting will be Monday, November 2nd at 7:30 PM, and that also will be Zoom. Any other meetings from anybody else that are having? Tim?
Yes, sir.
Frank? No Parks meetings?
Uh, no, I'm not sure when the next one is, but it's not this month, so.
Okay.
May I give a corvallis coronavirus date?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, go ahead. Mayor's going to have a statement to begin the meeting.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Just an update on the coronavirus. In the state, there have been 127,791 confirmed cases, 300, excuse me, 3,817 deaths. That was a plus 338 in 24-hour period. In the county, they've had 4,219 cases and 128 deaths. In our zip 21727, we've had 65 cases. And as I always remind everybody, the Frederick County Health Department will not give any data beyond that. It's private information. We've had 65 cases up here, added uptick about one for the week. Thank you very much. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
I got a question for the mayor real quick, if I can.
Go ahead.
Does the Mount students count in our 21727 zip? As though there was about 30 of those.
They do. And they're, they're, there is some correlation between an uptick from September 1st to where we are now. And, but they're, they're right on it. They're diligently working on it. And I've sat in on a couple of their town meetings with all their professors and staff, and they're doing everything possibly they can to keep that open. And they're doing a very good job. Thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Davis?
No, just, you know, thought it was important that everybody knew that, so we wouldn't think, oh, my Lord, do the other people in town are, are getting sick for no reason at all. That it comes with the, the return of, of the university, which
Very, very good point.
desperately needs. So thank heavens they're back here.
And thank you. All righty, we'll move on with the meeting items. Approval of the meeting minutes for September 8th. Has everyone looked at the meeting minutes as presented? Any corrections or modifications? Commissioner Ritz?
I had none.
I have none. Commissioner Davis?
No, I'm good.
Commissioner Burns?
No, I'm good.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
No, sir, not at this time. Excuse me.
I need a motion to accept the meeting minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes as presented.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell. Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
All right.
Aye.
I don't have my thing.
Aye.
Any ayes? Hearing none. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you.
Here we go.
Police report.
Now, can you do the meeting minutes, the virtual town meeting on September 14th? They need to be approved since
Okay, I'm sorry.
the public section.
All righty, we got one more. September 14th town meeting minutes. Everybody okay I need a motion to accept September 14th town meeting minutes.
I make a motion to accept the September 14th town meeting minutes.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Ritz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? Motion carries 5-0. Now we go on to the police report. Deputy Whitehouse.
Good evening, everybody. Deputy Whitehouse with the Frederick County Sheriff's Office. This is the September 2020 town report. Say so, our traffic stops and all that stuff is still not, we still haven't gotten a green light to do all that like we used to, as far as being very proactive. We're still kind of holding back on that at this point. But we do remain vigilant in areas and respond to any kind of traffic complaints, though, by that way. For those of you who have one, you could flip to the second page. This is just additional information. There's quite, quite a bit of them. I just wanted to touch on for the month of September. So, we had a few complaints, not a few, we had more than a few complaints of, once again, people entering the Brookfield Development through the, off the Irish Town Road side, which is obviously a do not enter one way. So we will be monitoring that. I had somebody that was nice enough to put something out in the, the Brookfield Community Facebook page for me, just to let them know that we were going to be out there and we're receiving complaints on that. We're continuing to do our, our safe, with our, our school safety checks at Mother Seton Anne at Emmitsburg Elementary. So we had, I think I touched on the burglary last, last town meeting. So we were able to identify the suspect, and I will be charging him with burglary in that case. That was the open garage. Someone took some items out of that. I conducted an eviction for, on behalf of the Civil Process Unit. They asked me to, they reached out to me and asked me to help them with that, so I did that. We all know, I have it on here, we have a deceased person. We had, you know, the gentleman who fell off of the third floor balcony there at the Staubers Building. So that's still under investigation, so I can't even comment on any, you know, thing related to that. There was another deceased person that appears to be all natural causes at this point. And that was, that was a gentleman that resided in Lincoln on the Park. So we also assisted patrol with calls outside of town, you know, with manpower issues and manpower shortages for patrol. We kind of, you know, if it's close by, we'll run out of town and, you know, help them with that. So myself and Deputy Hall, we were present in town for the duration of the, of the election last Tuesday. Any kind of fraud or scam calls, contact us if you have any kind of questions. So a lot of these, we're starting to see, you know, uptick in these, where people will call and ask you to, you know, leave your house, go to a store nearby, and put like, you know, X amount of dollars onto, I think in this case, the couple of cases I've seen is vanilla Visa card. So, you know, hey, you won Publisher's Clearing House. I need $500 from you. Go, go to a dollar store here in town and purchase a, you know, a Visa, a vanilla Visa credit card, put $500 on it, call me back, and I'll give you, or, you know, it's a processing fee or something, but that's what I need before I'm going to give you your 10 million. So, any, any kind of, you get any kind of calls of that, or if you're suspicious in any way, just call us, and we'll come out and tell you that it's a fraud or a scam. So I was on, had the pleasure of, and the honor of being on with the mayor the last week for a talk. I did that, I knew that on here. And the theft from, they had a theft of a couple cars in Brookfield during the month. That's like, I think, two weeks ago now. Still haven't identified who the person is. But I just wanted to note that it's very helpful for people to, the citizens, to download, you know, as they did before I even received the call, the pictures of the suspect and videos were already on social media on the Brookfield Community, you know, and the page and all that. So this is very helpful, although it may not always lead to identifying somebody or somebody being charged. It is very helpful for us if people are willing to put that out there. And I did note that in that neighborhood, neighborhoods around here, the few up here, a lot of people have these Ring cams, doorbell cameras, exterior cameras, which is very helpful. So if you're willing to let us, you know, see the video, if something happens nearby, that's greatly appreciated. So you can just reach out to us if, if something goes on in the neighborhood. So, I'm hearing the ding-dongs. Does that mean I'm done?
Okay, all right. Any questions for me? That's it.
I just want to thank you for your, being in town for this weekend. It was busy in town this weekend. We had a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah.
We had
Baseball tournaments.
a couple hundred children in the park on both sides. And then we had Unity Fest, and we had an Naval concert, and we had other things going on in town besides that. So it was a busy weekend. And I, he, you made your rounds. I've seen you a couple times, and, and I appreciate all the
Sure.
keeping an eye on it, I think.
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Very, really good service.
Anybody have any questions?
Deputy Whitehouse.
It's good to see you up on the mountain with Tim. Were you ready to say something, Tim?
Do you have a question? You have a question?
Uh, no, this is Commissioner Burns.
Okay.
Just wanted to say how much the students at Mother Seton enjoy having you come to the school and visit. They always get really excited. I've been hearing from the principal as well as the vice principal about how much they enjoy when you stop in and poke your head into the classrooms and say hello and answer questions and stuff like that. Been a kid that really enjoyed it.
Good. I like doing it as well. Do more of it.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Have a good evening. Thank you.
All righty. Town managers' report?
Good evening. This is the town manager's report for August 2020. I'll highlight some of the key areas related to streets. In streets, staff replaced and repaired street signs, conducted their monthly street sweeping, monthly storm drain inlet cleaning. They installed the wayside bench on West Main Street near the Doughboy. They cleaned the storm drain inlet at 500 Timber, Timber Mill Run, fixed a parking meter in front of the outhouse, trimmed some tree limbs on West Lincoln, the area, area of Fraley Road, conducted weed eating and weed killing on Welty and DePaul Street, as well as the Silo Hill median strip. They came in after hours one evening, picked up a damaged streetlight pole struck by a tractor trailer. Related to parks, they conducted their daily checks, their monthly park maintenance, mowed tree, trimmed and weed killed in all the parks. We continue to sanitize the playground equipment twice a week. They trimmed some trees in Memorial Park, weed killed, pulled weeds and mulched at the playground equipment in Memorial Park, washed the graffiti off Memorial Park restroom building. And again, they installed new kits in the both water fountains at the dog park. Related to water, as of August 24th, Rainbow Lake was 1.8 feet below the spillway level. As of September 28th, the lake wa, it was 2.8 feet below the spillway level. You'll see the optimum well levels. I added, just for comparison, we have August's well levels, but then I also added September 28th's well levels. Water production and consumption, we produced an average of 254,102 gallons per day and consumed an average of 222,995, which is 16.6%. Of that is backwash water. We produced 429,020 gallons of water from Mount St. Mary's in the month of August. Related to wastewater, we treated an average of 443 gallons per day and consumed 222,995 gallons per day, which means 49.6% of the wastewater treated in August was wild water. We had no spills of untreated sewage, however, we did exceed the plant's design capacity one time in the month of August, on August 4th, at 1,095,000 gallons per day. We received four inches of precipitation in August, however, we still have a deficit of 3.3 inches over the last six months. The track, trash pickup will remain Mondays in the month of October. Below that, there's the meetings that I attended, some of the meetings I attended in August. Some noteworthy items, staff repaired two water leaks on Waynesboro Pike and one on, in the 800 block of West Main Street. They unclogged the sewer at manhole number two at Silo Hill Strip Mall. The wastewater treatment plant has been running fairly smoothly. The pump station is running okay, but the flows have remained low for several months. Staff responded to a sewage dump behind Rube's Crab Shack. The county found a blue discharge hose rolled up in the grass. The sewage, by the time staff got there, sewage had percolated into the ground. MDE and the county were notified. It was determined staff spread lime on the affected area. There's unknown cause of the sewage dump at this time. The county is, and staff are going to continue to monitor it. It is located, this dump was actually outside of the town limits, but we are going to keep an eye on it as well. Pump number one, number, pump at well number two stopped running. Burnt wire was the cause, and that was replaced. We have a tentative plan to flush hydrants in October because they have not been done this year due to COVID. And then, one thing that, I'll go ahead and talk about, and the mayor can jump in, related to water, due to the continued lack of sustan, substantial rain, and the lake continuing to decrease its level below the spillway, right now at 2.8, and with no significant rain in sight, staff is concerned going in the winter with not enough, not enough precipitation. The staff has discussed with the mayor and believe it is the time to impose Phase 2 water restrictions. Basically, Phase 2 are mandatory restrictions of filling or replenishing swimming pools, outside consumption of water, including but not limited to washing of motor vehicles, houses, sidewalks, or any public ways, or watering lawns, gardens, or shrubs, and the providing of drinking water by operators of restaurants and taverns unless requested by patrons. And then, for large volume users, which is anyone over 10,000 gallons per day, the mayor, after consultation with the commissioners and the Director of Public Works, can or shall issue a target rate of water usage for large volume users.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have any questions for the town manager on her report?
Kathy, just one. I was out in Silo Hill tonight doing a fire prevention program, and just talked to some of the residents about that median strip. And I know there's some talk about possibly removing that. I really think we should do a survey of the, the people out there, because they, they say it really does slow the traffic down. And I didn't hear too many people in favor of getting rid of, rid of that. So, just so you, you keep that in mind.
Right. And obviously, it would be, it would be an agenda item that would be brought, brought forth before the board, before any decisions were, were made. Right now, we, we did, we hired a contractor to maintain the median strip, so hopefully it will stay maintained and there won't be any more issues.
Yeah, I can, why we'd want to do that, but I can also understand what their fear is also. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Ms. Willetts? Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, sir. Regarding the pending sewer flushing, is there a way we can do this at a low volume to perhaps not cause disturbance in the line? Or is it required for a high volume in order to, I guess, maintain the line and its effectiveness?
So for the, the hydrant flushing, that's to flush our water lines. And it has to be done at a certain rate and follow a certain cycle. They are making, I will meet with staff before it happens, and they are making changes to some of the ways that they flush the hydrants. But you have to do it with enough force to clean your line out. But, you know, in regards to, you know, last year's discolored water issues, I think we've come a long way. There's been several water leaks, several spikes at the water plant, and we have fared very well with no to very little discolored water complaints. So we've made a lot of steps in the right direction. But like I said, we're going to adjust the way we flush the hydrants from last year in hopes that we continue in the right direction.
Is there any way we can recapture what we're flushing in order, for example, like a pumper vehicle to use it, or some other, like, pool entity to sell it to them at a low rate or something akin to that?
I, it's never been an option that's been discussed or used. I don't believe that's an option for us. I can discuss it with the staff, but I don't believe that's a viable option.
Okay.
Because it, I just don't see that possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the manager?
What's the, I know it's a tentative plan. Any, any idea in, in October?
Probably closer to the end of the month.
Okay.
We're already, what, the first full week of October, probably either the third or fourth week. We'll certainly get plenty of notice out.
Great.
And it usually takes about a week to hit all the different areas. I just want to confirm, Mr. Mayor, we are good with moving forward with Phase 2 mandatory restrictions?
I, I recommend that to the board, but I'd like to, your consent, go ahead with that.
You need a motion?
Just consent.
We need a consent to move on to Phase 2 of the mandatory water restrictions. I'm in favor of it. Commissioner Ritz?
I don't have my book in front of me. If someone were in violation of this, what are the repercussions?
Um, violations, warning, per the code, for users other than large volume users. So this would be everybody but anybody over 10,000 gallons. A warning should be issued for the, or shall be issued for the first violation. A continuing or second violation shall be punishable by $50 fine. Any subsequent violations would be a $75 fine. For large volume users, for a first violation, a warning shall be given that the use of water is in excess of the target rate. For second, for a second or continuing or subsequent occurrence of daily water use in excess of the target rate, shall be fined an amount equal to two times the amount of the cost of water as determined by the then controlling water rate for that user, not to exceed $1,000 for each day. So first, I mean, everybody would get a warning. And obviously, we don't want to find anybody. We want to just get the word out. And the whole goal is just to restrict the water usage so we can save our water.
I guess the other question I have is, we're, we're seeking consent from the board this evening. Why, why are we doing that this evening? We considered it a couple months back, and then, you know, things looked pretty good, but it was like an agenda item.
Um, it didn't have to be a gen item, because per the code, the mayor, after consultation with the commissioners, so I did it just as a, to keep everybody informed. It doesn't have to be. If we wanted to impose it last week, I believe the mayor would have just called everybody. I met with the director of our, the water and sewer superintendent today, and we went over the numbers, and it's just, it's not getting any better, and there's no significant rain in the future.
I'm feeling positive.
For rain?
The hurricane may come and hit Monday of next week.
I'm, so it's consent. We're, we're expecting everyone to vote in the affirmative?
Maybe.
I'm just going to say no at this time, then.
Okay. Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, I'm okay with it, only because most of the things it's going to restrict, it's kind of out of season anyway. The watering of lawns, filling the pools, and things like that. So, it really shouldn't affect people too much.
I mean, the main concern is, once that, I mean, the water table is already low, it gets, if we don't try to do something now and it continues to drop, you can't get the water back with, I mean,
I understand.
Like long, like, we need, like, long soaking rains, not, you know, it's going to downpour for an hour and you get three inches in an hour, which I know that's exaggerating. But that's not the type of rain that we need. We need long soaking rain. We need a, a foot of snow that's going to melt slowly into the earth, things like that to replenish. And this is precautionary, because it doesn't look like we're getting much rain.
Commissioner Burns?
Uh, I agree with Commissioner Davis. Vote yes at this time.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'm sorry, I was muted. I vote yes. My apologies.
Okay. All righty, you got four to one. Consent.
Okay, thank you.
Town planners' report?
Hello, everyone. This is the planners' report for August of 2020. Under commissioners, I continue processing the wastewater treatment plant annexation. I had started working on a proposed amendment to Title 6 of the animal ordinance. Our chicken ordinance is expired, and we need to update a couple other things. Under grants, miscellaneous grant management for census, community legacy, and Chesapeake Bay Trust, submitted the Keep Maryland Beautiful Clean Up, Clean Up Grant final report. I submitted a Chesapeake Bay Trust watershed assistance grant in the amount of $34,000 for the Silo Hill Stormwater Basin MS4 project. I submitted two community legacy reimbursement requests and one community legacy grant application. Processed two town COVID business grants under MS4. I continued working on the yearly report, MS4 report. I attended two meetings on the Silo Hill Stormwater Basin Restoration Project, and our contractor conducted the yearly stormwater outfall inspections that are required per our permit. Processed eight zoning permit applications, seven backflow preventer applications, and responded to various incident reports throughout the town. Under Planning Commission, miscellaneous rudders, Duncan, and insurance brokers at Maryland Project Management, I reviewed a revised concept preliminary plot for Emmitsburg East Industrial Park and provided the applicant feedback. I also reviewed a concept plan for Lot 8 of the Emmitsburg East Industrial Park and provided the applicant feedback. That is a proposed 58,900 square foot manufacturing warehouse and 5,200 square foot office space. I also attended the planning commission meeting on the 31st, which was via Zoom, and there's some miscellaneous things. And I also want to note that the federal government has been battling back and forth regarding the census, and a recent court order mandated that the census be extended to October 31st. So that's good news from, for people to take the census who have not done it. Our self-response rate is currently at 73.1%. I believe we're going to meet our 80% goal, because that does not include the census responses via people coming to your door and getting it through that way. So I think we're going to meet 80% goal, I hope. And if you haven't taken your census, please take it. And that's everything.
Any questions for the town planner at this time? Commissioner Ritz?
I had none.
Commissioner Davis?
Good, thanks.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes, uh, just curious, the amendment to Title 6 for the animals, how, is that something that's going to be brought to our attention in the next few meetings? Or what's the plan with that one as far as the animals and stuff?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to probably bring it in December or January, if that's okay with the mayor and Kathy. Just depends on how
Is it?
Go ahead.
Are we, are we changing the ordinance to allow or not allow? Or what's the, what's the plan for that?
I'm still working with the mayor on that. He might want to speak more about that, about his recommendations. I, I'll go based on his recommendation.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, I just wasn't, when I saw animals earlier, I wasn't sure which direction we were going with that. And now with the chickens, I'm sure there's going to be public comment on it.
Yeah, the previous chicken ordinance, it had a sunset provision. So I think it was only a year that the town allowed it, and that expired many years ago. So the mayor asked that we relook at that. And we're also going to look at some dangerous dog situations and some other things.
Commissioner O'Donnell has a wonderful
All right, thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell has a wonderful sign up with the multi-user trail, keep six feet away from bears. That's at all times.
Bears need to keep six feet away from each other.
Okay.
That's something saying, the earth sign world. Mr. Golden, quick question related to rudders. The state highway, have they weighed in on their entrance exit piece yet?
Yes. So State Highway Administration, they sent over comments probably two or three weeks ago to rudders, and rudders is currently making those changes. So three weeks ago to rudders, and rudders is currently making those changes. So, um, to best of my knowledge, rudders has not submitted that updated plan to State Highway Administration yet. So it's basically a back and forth kind of thing.
And the second item, I'm not sure if it's the bridge project or related to the bridge project, but, uh, an inquiry came in related to the mesh, uh, anti-erosion material at Jubilee's side slope on Main Street. I was wondering if, uh, there's a timeline when that would be removed. Uh, the, the concern that came forward to me was critters were getting caught in it?
Sure. Yeah, um, I reached out to State Highway Administration. They stated that it was not theirs. So supposedly, it's Jubilee's. So I had, um, Amy reaching out to Jubilee to see, you know, why it's up there and when they're going to remove it.
Wow, okay. Um, it, it looked to me as if it had belonged to the Milani folks as it seemed connected to the, the swale work and the, the greening of the hill and such. So, but, but they, they really feel it's Jubilee's, huh?
Yeah, yeah, that kind of shocked me. So I'm going to reach out to, uh, Amy tried to reach out to him, but I'll reach out to him again, um, the owner, and see what his thoughts are on that.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Sure.
Yes, Zach, I have a question. Um, how's the daycare center coming along at the East Main Street?
Yeah, I'm in contact with her probably every week or s- or two, um, just checking on the progress and trying to help her out as much as I can. Um, supposedly, right now, she's in the process of getting her site plan created through, uh, engineering firm. So we're just waiting on that and hopefully we have that within the next month or so.
Okay.
And she did receive a grant, uh, from Community Legacy to repaint the exterior and repair the roof and some other small things on the exterior. So it's going to look really good when it's done.
I'm glad. She's planning on opening an 80, 80 children, um, business there for, I hope it works all out because we could use it here in town since the other one closed.
Oh, yeah, we're really excited about this project. So trying to help as much as possible.
How's Dunkin' Donuts coming?
Dunkin', um, they're going to be opening up, Kathy, did I say it was the 18th?
Yes.
18th. So I'm trying to, uh, talk with Mr. Patel Chatel. Um, the mayor has a meeting with him tomorrow, so hopefully we can get a grand opening scheduled for that day.
I did see some work on the, um, daycare center. It looked like they put up a new railing or they, or they reinforced it or something. There's, there's something going on there.
Yeah, that was part of their community legacy grant.
Okay. How, how is the development coming on Emmett Ridge Two?
Um, supposedly, there's been an offer placed on the property. Um, that's the last thing I've heard, but we're, in regards to that area, um, this is kind of, I wanted to speak regarding this to, um, the deputy. Um, the Irish Town Road Improvement Plan was just submitted, so the Planning Commission will be reviewing that at the end of this month. Um, so they will, there's two openings there, the Brookfield. There's one on, I think it's Heatherwind Drive, that's closed. That's going to be opened up to a two-way. And also Brookfield Drive, that's just a one-way out right now, and that's going to be, um, brought to a, a one, or a two-way as well. So stay tuned with that. We're going to be seeing a lot of improvements to that area shortly.
Did they give a timeline on, uh, the modifications to, I, I'm assuming it's, uh, Ryan who, who brought that forward? The Irish Town piece or is it someone else?
It's actually, uh, Mr. Demet, the, the owner of the existing lots. There's 19 lots along Irish Town Drive there, or Irish Town Road. So in order for him to develop those lots,
Right.
had to do the improvement. So that kind of tells me that there's some kind of deal with Ryan because he wouldn't be putting in hundreds of thousands of dollars of improvements.
Correct.
If they don't have some kind of a plan in place.
So I, I'm sorry to ask for clarification then because I, I get a lot of feedback about that issue, actually those issues, those two, uh, uh, access points and limited access points, as it were. Um, so a permit has been sought. I'm sorry, clarify where we are on the process. I want to make sure I can relate this accurately.
Oh, sure. I'm sorry. Um,
No, no, you, you are fine. I'm, I'm not retaining it.
So they submitted their improvement plan.
Okay.
Which is needed. Uh, the Planning Commission has to approve the improvement plan in order to do the sidewalks, streetlights, um, road widening, water. There's going to be a 10-inch water line required, 8-inch sewer line, um, stuff like that. And, uh, there's going to be some widening of the roads on both sides, more along, um, Brookfield. And they're also going to be putting in the driveway aprons, um, things like that, and underground utilities.
So, and, and I, I can't ask you to speculate too carefully, but once it goes to planning and assuming, um, there, there might be some feedback, is this a, a four-month, six-month, 12-month timeline hypothetically?
Uh, I haven't asked them, but I believe it's going to be within the next four to six months. Um, supposedly, the housing market is very hot right now.
It is, yes.
For Demet. So they believe that the housing with the right price is going to sell pretty quickly out there.
Very interesting. Okay. Thank you very much for the clarification.
You're welcome. And they still have to go through the county approval process because that is a county road. Um, so that may take a little bit more time.
I have one more question, Zach.
Sure.
Are, are they going to repair the bridge at the bottom of the hill, Irish Town Road?
No, that is, was not a requirement, um, from their 1995 improvement plan. Um, we will require a traffic impact study for the Emmett Ridge Two. So that will be able to tell if that bridge needs, um, repaired, replaced, widened, what it needs. I know if it, if it does need repaired, it'll probably kill the project because we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars, um, to replace that bridge.
Zach, is that the bridge that, um, Delegate Cox had emailed us about?
No, Delegate Cox, uh, he's talking about the bridge on North Seaton.
Okay.
I mean, Irish Town Road, right?
Yeah, Irish Town Road is not, is mainly, I think it's Culver Pipe. So it would be Culver Pipe would probably be put back instead of the bridge.
Well, maybe that, I, I, Ryan typically put options out for lot, builds a model and options for lots, but they must feel very strongly about the market if they're, if they prompted, um, in some manner, um, to have the developer go ahead and, um, do those improvements, Irish Town Road. Very, very good, very good mark.
I'm glad. It's been a long time. It needs to be done. And then, and then if the other, they're going to do the entrance to, at the second entrance to, uh, Emmett, Emmett Ridge Two and Silo Hill, correct? I mean, uh, North Gate. That will be done first, Zach?
Yep, that's going to be our first priority.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions before we move on?
Yeah, one, one question I forgot to ask, uh, Mr. Golden. Um, and I guess this would be towards the mayor as well. There was, obviously, the sign posted, uh, out in Silo Hill in front of the existing hotel about the four-story hotel and pad sites for, uh, other businesses. I don't know if that's been presented to, uh, the town yet or anything of that nature. I know a lot of people were commenting, commenting on it. Um, has there been any further development on that subject? Or, uh, was that just a sign that was posted with the hopes of drumming up interest?
If I may answer that, it's, um, it's, it's a little progressive. Uh, you know, last fall, we went over, um, tap fees for the hotel. And that, that's as far as we got, we're, working with that approval. And, uh, the gentleman did come in, the developer, and said he wanted to look at an extended stay hotel. And we said, okay, that's good. And, and we went through, um, how it'd help him to, uh, we could help him on the taxes, but there, nothing has been approved. Uh, and it would always come back through the board. It's just a, it's come, it's a coming soon sign with, um, and we can't stop them from doing it. That's all we can do.
Well, I hope it does come, um, because we made a lot of changes so they could bring the business and the hotel here.
Right.
And it'd be a shame if they don't bring it here.
Right.
We could use the businesses. Um, any other questions before we move on? Commissioner comments? Commissioner Ritz?
Yeah, um, the election last week, the mayoral election was, was a lot more exciting than the commissioner race. Um, but I'd like to thank everybody that took time to check my name off there at the bottom of the ballot. So thank you to everybody who voted. Congratulations to Mayor Briggs for fourth term, fourth term.
Starting his fourth term.
Starting his fourth term, yeah. Congrats.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Burns? Commissioner comment?
Yeah, I just wanted, uh, yep, just wanted to echo what, uh, Commissioner Ritz said. Congratulations to, uh, Commissioner Ritz. Congratulations to Mayor Briggs as well on their both reelections. Um, also to follow up with what was talked about in the September meetings about, obviously, trying to bring some light to the schools, Emmitsburg Elementary in particular. Um, and hopefully now, uh, with the election passed, us, Mayor Briggs and I can start working together to, you know, really start talking to the county. Uh, I spoke with, uh, Ms. Willis as well about some ideas, um, that we can hopefully, um, bring some focus, uh, into the school and what is needed for the school to, uh, continue at a, a high level, especially with the future of Ryan Holmes coming in. We want to provide the best possible educational opportunities for any future families that would move in. And I also learned in the, uh, newspaper that my question about the YMCA and where that came from and things of that nature, um, I guess the newspaper reached out to Frederick County. And, uh, if we want to see anything, uh, with the YMCA or anything of that nature for the Northern Frederick Counties, we have to reach out to them directly. And it has nothing to do with the county, uh, and the schools. So, um, just a quick follow-up to that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, sir. Sorry about that. I'm still playing with the mute, trying to learn how to get it the right way. So apologies for the delay. Um, congratulations to Mayor Briggs and Mayor Ritz. Quite a turnout for both of you. Uh, most impressive. Um, and congratulations to all the candidates who, who ventured to serve our community. Uh, that's something that we, we shouldn't take lightly. Um, the, the nice thing that I see in our community regarding elections, uh, on the upside is the passion of the individuals to serve and to, to be part of this process. Um, I've dealt with town office multiple times and I, I've always come away always impressed. Uh, I had this rather large mountain biking event that, uh, the folks brought to me, that organization. Uh, we had, uh, over a hundred people visiting on the mountain, participating in this, about 50, sorry, 46 young people actually riding and adults and coaches. Uh, they spent a rather large sum of money in town. And for that to be possible, town staff really was quite accommodating. Uh, we partnered with the Frederick County Public Libraries, who are involved as well as the deputies. Um, I, I couldn't get the mute going in time, but, uh, Deputy Whitehouse came up early. He met me on the mountain shortly after seven, and later, uh, he was there through the better part of the day. As our concern was traffic and the crosswalk for young people to get across the road, Hampton Valley Road. And that worked out very well. Uh, another thank you definitely goes out to our Frederick County Highway crews, who also provided sign boards, uh, that also slowed a lot of traffic. And it was a, a very positive event on a weekend of a lot of very positive events, plural. As we move forward, uh, we challenge the mayor and we challenge Commissioner Ritz, uh, to uphold their duties in the hot, to the highest standard. And, uh, again, we welcome their service. This is, this is a very exciting time for Emmitsburg. Um, so many positive things are happening. Um, the hope is we can both retain the quality of character of our community, uh, as a great family community and a great environment for people. And we look to the future to see, you know, how we can best manage it to maintain that quality. And I think with the staff and the board and our, our leadership with the mayor, um, my hope is we can certainly, uh, address those challenges as they, as we move forward together. So thank you all very much. Appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you. Commissioner Davis?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioner Ritz, congratulations. Look forward to, to working with you for the next couple of years. It, uh, we have a lot of projects we can keep working on and hopefully have, have a, make a good run of this. Uh, to the Southgate community, uh, apologize for you being overrun this past weekend with, uh, baseball families. Uh, we didn't realize that it was going to be quite as big as it, as it was. Um, I had one, uh, one complaint that we went and I spoke with the families this afternoon, and I think everything that they, uh, they wanted to talk about, their ways to, to, to fix, uh, things because I don't see baseball going away. I see it getting bigger next year with it looks like Emmitsburg will have its own Babe Ruth team next year, along with the teams from Thurmond. So, uh, I see more field uses out there, hopefully not as big as this past weekend. But, uh, that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. I, I also want to congratulate both of you for your election wins. Um, it was, I had a good time running. Also didn't win, but I had a good time running. Uh, got to speak to a lot of people and, and I hope to do it again in the future. Um, I also was out a bit busy in the park with the park, uh, both parks were completely full this weekend. Um, it was all COVID safe. Uh, all the events that we had, uh, all the ballplayers and stuff had to do COVID checks and everything before they even came to play. But all the teams that participated were from all over Northern Maryland and Virginia and some, I think one was from Pennsylvania. But they were all, um, here to play ball in Emmitsburg. And they played, there was, at one time, there were 600 kids playing at, at one time on Saturday, and then Sunday they had single elimination done. But the Lions Club also did very well with concession stand. They, you know, uh, we made a thousand dollars in two days, and that will go great for the, uh, glasses and the eye exams that we can pay for, for the community. I, I want to thank everybody for, for, um, and everyone's help for, in the park that they did. We had, I think, every single one of the 28 members, we had Lions Club worked this weekend for chicken barbecues and stuff. And it was all went for the, for the town and then we'll all go back into the community. So, um, that's all I have to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, thank you. I'll, I'll be very brief. Just, uh, I have, we have our weekly show. We didn't have one this week, but, uh, this month we had, um, Kelly Schultz, uh, Secretary of Commerce, as our guest. Uh, the president of Mount St. Mary's came back and we had Ben Whitehouse here. It was terrific. It's just a short little thing we, uh, put on YouTube about, um, COVID and also, um, things that are going on in town, but also bring these people. And we've been really success, it's been a wonderful experience for me to do that. And, uh, uh, just the other things, there was a Mount Athletic Advisory Counseling Meeting, a Zoom meeting I attended. Um, the, uh, National Fire Heritage Senator Board, Vigilant Hose Company, we had a joint meeting there with the officers of, uh, Vigilant Hose and the, and, uh, going over what, what they're going to do there. We swore in officers, we, um, dedicated a park to, to E. Eugene Myers, this, the, the community park, and it was spectacular. And, uh, there are, there is a working group for present trainers, call to action, and, uh, on University Diversity Equity and Inclusion Task Force. And, uh, I've, I've been on Zoom for two of those and, and we're, and, um, we're, we're working with that. Uh, I'll go, just Sunday, I'll go over later at, I, I want to have Zoom words to say, but, um, it was spectacular, the area. It was such a pleasure to run against two gentlemen that really, it's the same week, um, that we, we had that horrible thing on TV, the, uh, the way, um, Commissioner Sweeney and, uh, former mayor Hoover and I, we conducted, we stuck to issues and, and we really worked hard on that and, and we all, all hit the pavement. And, uh, they were real, uh, fine gentlemen. It was, uh, just a pleasure campaigning, uh, with them. Yes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All righty. Uh, no public comments? None. Administrative business?
That item will be postponed. Um, the census has been six,
Extended?
The census, the census has been extended through October 31st, so we will do the drawing on November, at the November meeting.
All righty. Uh, number two, uh, B will be proclamation congratulating WF Delauder and Sons and the 65 years of business.
I'll, I'll read that. Uh, uh, Mr. Delauder, I, if you'd come forward, I, I, I hope we're, we're doing this example, but thank, thank you for coming. I know you're very business and, uh, very successful business here. I know you're very business and very successful business here in town. I'd like to read this proclamation to you congratulating WF, excuse me, WF Delauter and Son Incorporated on 65 years of business. This is from the town, all commissioners and our residents and myself and the staff. Whereas WF Delauter and Sons was founded in 1955 by Willie F. Delauter and his son Russell E. Delauter in Thurmont, Maryland, which won international TD six dozer. And whereas Russell's youngest son Kirby Delauter assumed the role of president of the company in 1994 as the third generation Delauter and moved the company to Emmitsburg, Maryland, where the company continued to grow and be successful. And whereas today WF Delauter and Sons has approximately 72 employees, 35 on-road vehicles, and over 100 pieces of off-road heavy equipment, and completes work throughout mid-Atlantic area to include Maryland, Pennsylvania, West Virginia. And whereas the town of Emmitsburg is proud to pay a tribute to WF Delauter and Son on the occasion of its 65th anniversary of business in 2020. And whereas WF Delauter and Sons will continue to serve as a leading business exemplary employer and corporate leader in our community for generations to come. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and board of commissioners of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland do hereby recognize the positive impact WF Delauter and Sons enjoys with the company as they celebrate their 65th anniversary adopted this fifth day of October of 2020. Kirby, I'll do this. I'll bring this over to you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
I hope you feel comfortable taking her.
Okay. I want to thank you all too. It's just great having our business here.
Go ahead and say anything you want, Kirby. If you want to say-
Go ahead. No, it's just, it's great having our business here. Been here since 2006, so hopefully it continues to be a good two-way street for everybody in the business community and for the town as well. So appreciate you all working with us as much as you do also.
Thank you for moving here. And we really, really enjoyed having you, sir. I'm going to give this to you.
Okay.
I hope you're comfortable taking it. Just the best circumstance I can.
Right.
Where do you want to be?
Can I get a picture of you guys?
Front or back?
Yeah, sure. Okay, ready? One, two.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Let's see where we are.
See, we have another proclamation declaring October 6th, the National Night Out for Emmitsburg. Mr. Mayor?
Okay. You want me to do it? All right, I'll go ahead with this one. It's proclamation, National Night Out, Tuesday, October 6th, 2020, Community Park, 5:00 to 7:00 PM. Whereas the National Association of Town Watch, acronym A, no, N-A-T-W, sponsors the National Community Building Campaign on the first Tuesday in August of each year entitled National Night Out. Whereas National Night Out is an annual event in the town of Emmitsburg for the past four years. Whereas the National Night Event provides an opportunity for neighbors in the town of Emmitsburg to join over 38 million people in 16,000 communities, all from all 50 states, U.S. Territories, Canadian cities, and military bases worldwide. And whereas National Night is an annual community building campaign that promotes police-community partnerships, where neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighborhoods safer, more caring places to live. And whereas it is essential that all neighbors of the town of Emmitsburg come together with police, work together to build a safer and more caring community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and council of the town of Emmitsburg do hereby proclaim Tuesday, October 6th, 2020, National Night Out in Emmitsburg, and do hereby call upon all citizens, neighbors, community agencies, businesses to join the Frederick County Sheriff's Office, Department, uh, Skew Office and National Association of Town Watch to support for the National Night Out in the Community Park, adopted this fifth day of October 2020. I'm sorry, I forgot to take this thing off. I'm trying to figure out what's going on. I always have to gaggy. I'm sorry. That was goofy. Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If that's okay with this is-
Yes, it's okay.
For everybody.
Yeah, can you read, just give everybody an idea? Give everybody an idea of the schedule for tomorrow night?
Why don't you go, if you go, do I have it up here?
You should have it, yes.
Our fourth, here it is, Fourth Annual National Night Out. Event will occur tomorrow, October 6th, in Community Park from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. We generally, it's always held in August, but because of what's going on, the coronavirus, it was moved to this evening. The event is free and will feature police vehicles, fire trucks, temporary tattoos, music, prepackaged food, ice cream, pony rides, games, and a petting zoo. Face masks are required, and there will be hand sanitizing stations available for public use throughout the event. Parking will be near the east entrance of Community Park or at the community pool. A special thanks to McDonald's for donating hamburgers for the event. We hope to see you there. It's a wonderful event and 5:00 to 7:00 tomorrow night. And the staff's put a lot of time in all this, trying to locate the proper time to have this and make it efficient. And I think we're up for it. Thank you very much, staff.
Thank you.
I got one more proclamation.
Next proclamation will be thanking the Frederick Rock Disc Golf, Frederick Rock? Is that what it is? Fred Rock?
Fred Rock.
Fred Rock Disc Golf with their service in constructing the Emmitsburg Disc Golf Course for Emmitsburg. Is it completely done?
Joe, would you like, Commissioner Joe, would you like to read it?
Are you-
You can go ahead and do it.
Would you, okay.
Go ahead and do it.
Proclamation thanking Fred Rock Disc Golf for their service in constructing the Emmitsburg Disc Golf Course. Whereas Fred Rock Disc Golf Group is a Frederick County Disc Golf Club team based in Middletown, Maryland, with club members throughout Frederick County. And whereas in July 2019, the Emmitsburg Disc Golf Course began design and construction via a community parks and playground grant and volunteers from Fred Rock Disc Golf Team. And whereas many volunteers from the Fred Rock Disc Golf Team have contributed hundreds of hours and resources to design and construct the Emmitsburg Disc Golf Course in our community park over the past 15 months. And whereas the town would like to offer special recognition to the efforts of Eric Bojer, Wayne Nordberg, and Tracy Jones for their multiple weekends and evenings spent away from family and friends constructing the course. And whereas the town of Emmitsburg is pleased to announce the grand opening of the course on Saturday, October 24th, 2020 at 10:00 AM, due to Fred Rock Disc Golf's outstanding community service that is creating a more active and healthy community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and board of commissioners of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland do hereby express our sincere and grateful appreciation to Fred Rock Disc Golf for their countless hours of volunteer service, and do hereby urge our residents to recognize and enjoy the valuable work done by these volunteers by playing disc golf on our newly constructed disc golf course, adopted this fifth day of October 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Ritz.
That's hard reading those things.
All righty, we got a consent agenda, one appointment. Let's see, consent agenda, yeah. I don't see it on here. Listen.
On page 20.
There it is. Consent, we have Wayne Slaughter for appointment of Board of Appeals for a term September 9th, 2020 to September 9th, 2023. I need a motion to accept, to appoint Wayne Slaughter onto the Board of Appeals.
I make a motion to appoint Wayne Slaughter to the Board of Appeals?
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you.
Second by Commissioner Davis. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any nays? Motion carries, five zero. Treasury report, Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. The cash balance, sorry, this is the cash activity as of September 29th, 2020. The cash balance as of September 1st, 2020, $5,407,723. The amount of deposits were $121,520, withdrawals in the amount of $211,104. The operating balance forward, $5,318,139. Below are the top 10 checks issued by the town, and town staff is on hand if there are questions that they're able to answer at this time.
Any questions about the Treasury report at this time? Mr. Ritz?
I'm good. Thanks, sir.
I'm good. Hearing none, we'll move on. Planning Commission report, Commissioner Ritz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. As Zach alluded to earlier, the Planning Commission is meeting on October 26th to approve, hopefully, the Brookfield Improvement Plan, specifically the sewer water, lighting, road improvements along Irriestown Road, now that the developer is ready to develop these homes. Just a reminder to everybody that the town deferred these improvements until the developer was ready to go, and that time's now. So there we go.
Any questions about the Planning Assembly Report? Hearing none, we'll move on to regular agenda items. Swearing of, swearing into the new elected officials? Mr. Mayor, you were up first.
If I may introduce Ms. Dalton from the county, she's here to swear me in. Thank you.
It's a privilege to be here, Your Honor. In this town, you're an honor. Is this good?
She's got her own.
Okay.
They just need one for Joe.
If I could get you to raise your right hand for me, please? You may take off your mask if you'd like. We've passed the test, I do believe. Do you, Donald Briggs, solemnly declare and affirm, under the penalties of perjury, that you will support the Constitution of the United States, that you will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland, support the Constitution and laws thereof, that you will, to the best of your skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of mayor for the town of Emmitsburg, according to the Constitution and laws of this state? You are duly sworn. You may put your hand down. You want to use your pen, sir, and sign my test book for me, please?
Ms. Dalton, that was impressive that you had all that memorized. I just-
I've been saying this since 1986.
Some experience there.
And yet I do sometimes still trip over. I just need you to sign right under your name, sir. Right there. We're lefties, we can write upside down.
I very well know.
Actually, you're a lefty doctor and-
Eric, can we get a picture?
And I also have a, not a proclamation, but a certificate for you, from the state of Maryland, to Donald N. Briggs of Emmitsburg, Maryland. Greeting, be it known that the people of Emmitsburg, Maryland, reposing great trust and confidence in your integrity and wisdom, did elect you mayor for the town of Emmitsburg. You are therefore to execute the said office justly, honestly, diligently, and faithfully, according to law, and hold the same for a three-year term, as defined, determined by and according to the code of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland. It is signed and sealed with the seal of the Frederick County Circuit Court by myself, Sandra Dalton, on the fifth day of October 2020. You're still welcome.
Can I get a picture of you two?
Oh, okay, we have a good time.
I'll be by the way.
His job is to be my chauffeur.
For our records, can you sign this, that you swore in the mayor?
If I may, I have some comments to make, but I think I'd like to keep it moving and swear Commissioner in, if that works for you.
It works for me.
Okay.
Whatever I want to-
You're welcome.
Swearing in of-
And I'll, we both will have some comments if you want.
Oh, sure. This is your third term or second?
Third. Are we masking or not?
Willis.
Let's get a shot of this, make the asshole.
Yeah, you might want to just move over, Cliff.
I am.
One, two.
Thank you. I'll take this off. I have not memorized.
That's fine.
If you would raise your right hand. Joseph Ritz III, Commissioner, October 5th, 2020. Aye.
Aye, Joseph Ritz III.
I'm going to read the rest, if that's okay.
That's great.
Do affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of Maryland, and support the Constitution and laws thereof, and that I will be to best of my skill and judgment, diligently and faithfully, without partiality or prejudice, execute the office of Commissioner of Emmitsburg, Maryland, according to the Constitution and laws of the state, and the Charter and Code of the town of Emmitsburg.
I do.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
I got a present here somewhere.
I'm signing going on tonight.
You want?
Did you get a good one?
Thank you.
Here's this back to you, Matty. Just want to fix, she had a picture last year.
I think one of you guys wanted it.
Okay.
Sorry, Commissioner Sweeney. Actually, let me get one of this commissioner. One, two, three. I can get you, I can get you a copy.
Hi, Crystal. I guess I could swap that over to you.
Actually.
Need a picture too?
If I may read a few comments?
Yep, you can go ahead and read your comments.
Okay, and just, I've got a couple, it looks like a couple of pages, but it's really in big print. Just good evening. I'm truly humbled to be elected-
Just, "Good evening, I'm truly humbled to be elected for fourth term. I ran against two true gentleman opponents where only the issues were discussed much different from the decorum exchanges between our presidential candidates. This speaks so highly of our town and what we expect. I had the opportunity to visit all the neighborhoods twice, one for the census and the second time while running for office. I found out that there are a lot of people I don't know. It's tough in these pandemic times, but there is little excuse for me not meeting you, and not sure exactly what the safest way to do that is, but I will, I will be out on it and because we are so delightful, enjoyable, meeting people in neighborhoods. I am approachable and my contact information is on the web for your convenience, so please contact me, as many have. We have really dedicated commissioners, please contact them, I mean, they're very dedicated." What a week, Sunday started out, this last Sunday, this last weekend, just speaks so highly of Emmitsburg. I started out Sunday morning at the Basilica, watching sixty bagpipers perform outside the fence of the FEMA and Homeland Security Facility, as they were not allowed in. They, they felt so dedicated to this honoring fallen firefighters that they came from all up and down the East Coast to be here, sixty-plus bagpipers, and, and it was a wonderful ceremony. Thank you to the Odd House for accommodating them and being a wonderful host and helping them organize it. Our, our prayers and best wishes go out to all the fallen firefighter families and could not be here, they could not be here this year. Thank you to the Odd House again for accommodating them and making this all possible. Then over to the ball fields, where there were tournaments play on their all fields, and thank you Frank Davis for pulling the baseball back here, here in town. And then out to the malt, the user trail to meet with Commissioner O'Donnell, as he prepared for hosting a hundred people, about sixty young bikers, and bringing them here. Then back to the town to see young baseball players and their families dining out at the Odd House, the Carriage House parking lot was full, lots of activity at the other eateries, and I, I know the mountain biker group came, they added to this, the gas station evening, that was packed. Then the afternoon, I went to the uni event in Community Park, this is a second uni event hosted by the Emmitsburg Council of Churches, it was well attended, the university was here, Representative, President Traynor, and Commissioner Sweeney was singing, and former Commissioners Buckman and Joy also were partaking. And then finishing up the day at the annual pilgrimage for C service at the Basilica, an annual event that began in nineteen seventy-five with the candidization of Elizabeth Ann Seaton, and it was followed by the first pilgrimage, but been, began in nineteen seventy-seven. We ought to do, a lot, a lot to do in the next three years, that's bringing salaries of staff in line with the economy, picking up pace on replacing water and sewer line, that is, that, both these have double asterisk after them. We have never stopped working on these services, we, we completed that nineteen million dollar wastewater treatment plant and brought it in at one point five percent over cost. This is, bringing this in was not automatic, and that's very, very good for a government building. I want to thank the staff, besides doing the normal work, they had all the tension, I can't, everyday tension to bring, bring that about, that, that big project out there, and it's a state-of-the-art, brand-new, no, no backdrop on it and dealing with engineers and builders like. We brought it for safe landing. It's virtually unheard of for government projects. Let's see where we want to go. We have to continue to be frugal and do all these things, but we are on the right track. It's been a hundred years since Emmitsburg faced a pandemic. Just looking back at this weekend, the activity of joy and glee, like the sign on South Seaton Avenue says, "Emmitsburg has reopened." Very fragile, we have to take care of it at any time, if you can use local people who have services, plumbing or whatever, and, and support our restaurants and banks and hair, hairstylist, please do, it's, it's, we're open, but we don't know what we're going to face through the winter now that we're all going back inside, so. Now we do all we can to support our neighbors, businesses, please choose local businesses. That's my final message, and thank you all, and I look forward to, to serving you. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Ritz, would you like to say something?
I have nothing prepared, just thanks again, looking forward to serving the community for another three years.
Thank you.
I'll keep it brief. Thanks.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, reorganization?
Okay, I'm gonna, I put it right here, I've just got to find it, okay. What did I do with the, Matty? Hold a sec. Matty, I don't know what I did with that, I thought I had it right here. I'm sorry. She's going to get me a copy of it, I thought I brought it out here.
That's what I wrote down.
Okay. Okay. All right. You know, we like to rotate chairs, and we're, we've had people come in and out, and, and we want everybody to get a shot at everything and work toward who will be the next mayor. And I, I want to thank Commissioner Sweeney for serving for two years as our president. I'm going to ask him to step down, be vice president, and our Community Activities Committee run that, we have lots of work to do, especially with our seniors, and assisting Mr. Burns, Commissioner Burns, on getting school, more attention to our schools, and it's been wonderful working with you. I'm going to propose that Mr. O'Donnell, who had previously served, be the new president, but it speaks nothing about your activity. You've been great, you've been super. And from there, Commissioner Burns requesting that he be treasurer. Commissioner Davis, keep this baseball thing going and make it great again here, serve one more year at Parks. Commissioner Ritz, I ask you to stay on it, planning. It's going, it's got a good click to it right now, and, and you're all doing very well. It's really an honor and a pleasure to serve with you. These are only one-year assignments, and we're open to comments from any angle on, on the board, and if you have anything to say, Commissioner.
No, I'm, I'm glad to have served two years as president of the board, it brought me out of my shell more, given me more confidence, and I ran from there, so.
There you go.
There you go. But, you know, I, I have no problem with moving and trying another thing, and I don't know if I do Citizens Advisory Board, I think it was called something else when I, Streets, I think.
Streets and Water before all that.
Streets and Water, mm-hmm.
Okay.
I never got to do the Citizens Advisory, but Commissioner Burns, you have a meeting coming up on the twentieth, is it okay if I come sit in the meeting?
Yes, absolutely.
I'll let you finish your meeting.
Yeah, obviously with COVID.
I'll let you finish it, your, your out. Yeah, I'm here, finish your year out, and then I'll come in and see what you're doing, and you can bring me up to speed with your meeting.
Yeah, I think absolutely, COVID put a wrinkle in, obviously, the regularity of meetings and things of that nature, and I think there's a lot of voices that want to speak on behalf of Emmitsburg, so, any help, and hopefully, you can guide it in the right direction going forward as well.
Thank you.
You'll have to vote on this, but it would take effect for the November, well, right after this meeting, but if you want to vote on, but the sitting meeting will be November second, I think. But I think you'll have to accept that.
All righty, we need consent on the mayor's recommendations. I'm fine with mine. Commissioner Ritz?
I have, no, this, I have no, no comment other than planning, that's, you know, I, I did that for one year, and looking forward to, if everybody's agreeable to it, for, for me continuing on planning.
Lot of stuff coming.
We have a lot of.
Lot of new stuff, yeah.
Lot of stuff coming up, so, Zach keeps us busy.
Commissioner Burns? You okay?
Nah, I, absolutely, I accept and look forward to taking over for Commissioner O'Donnell and crunching the numbers and learning more about the ins and outs of the everyday life.
Commissioner Davis?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, sir.
All hearing, we're all fine, so we will, the next meeting, and we'll all switch over to our new assignments. Thank you. Mr. Mayor? All righty, number three on the agenda will be the consideration for small, remaining small business grant monies that we have left.
Yeah, I'll start.
Redistribution.
For agenda item number three, so, we asked, as the board requested, a letter from EBPA requesting what their plan would be for the monies if they were to receive the eighty-five hundred dollars at their portion of the small business grant monies. You'll see what's attached on page twenty-four and twenty-five, was a, a well-written letter. My concern was it was written as more of a mission statement than their actual plan for what the monies were to be spent on, so in discussions with the mayor and staff, staff and mayor recommending leaving the seventeen thousand dollars in Fund Two and opening another round of grant funding to the businesses that probably desperately need the money as the pandemic continues.
That's my position too, that we save the money and the EBPA can, they, they could request part of that money if they formulate something more direct, that, all the commissioners wanted something more, particularly Commissioner Davis, about exactly how they wanted to expend the money, and I, I don't think we got it with this letter, so we, we need, we want to keep it for the other business, see if there's a second swing at it, and if EBPA comes in, we will bring it back to you for consideration if they have some, some project that, that we can work on, I think that's my.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Any, any, any questions?
I do.
Commissioner Ritz?
I guess just, just to make sure, and it's something I didn't ask last week, the initial, was it thirty thousand? And it was a grant from the county?
No.
No.
Our money.
It's our money, okay. I wasn't sure if that came from the county or not, and if it did, would, would there be any penalty how we disbursed it too, and I, I didn't bring that up last time, but that's fine, that alleviates my, my concern there. So I guess, when we open up the other round, are we going to do like the small business again, or is it going to be a little less restrictive, meaning, you know, size, number of employees, size of the business, and, and, you know, things like that?
Zach, are you still on?
Well, I think what, yeah, Zach's on, I think we're going to discuss it with the mayor, but I think our goal is to relax it a little bit, to open it up, maybe reduce the number of employees, reduce, I think we had, Zach, it was originally a fifty percent loss in revenues, we probably reduced that to twenty-five percent, that way there's more businesses eligible to receive the monies.
I know initially we talked about, you know, we were going to call it Phase Two, I think that was just the informal name to it, so it sounds like this will be Phase Two, less, less restrictive, but, okay, that's great, makes sense to me, thank you.
Mr. Sweeney?
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, sir. My, in conversations with businesses that were involved the first time, some of the business owners, I think everybody had a pretty good understanding of the purpose after some discussions with town staff. My hope is that if somebody presents a, a grant request, and if it doesn't meet the threshold initially, that we provide, and, and I assume this happened the first time, but that we provide very strong feedback so they have a sense as to how they can modify and enhance their grant application, so it can meet the requirements. Literally coach them up so that they're, they're eligible. I, I would hate to see somebody intimidated by the process, I would hate to see somebody who was discouraged by the first process not apply in, in the second round, so, so long as their eligibility hits the, the requirements and the threshold, so, if I could encourage user-friendliness, please do so, that's my ask of the mayor and guiding staff, please.
I think we already have, and we, the only thing they have to have is a, what do you call it, a permit from the, to be in business from the town, I think that's the only thing we really require, and, and we do have those thresholds, but we're, we're open to anybody, go ahead, Kathy, I'm sorry.
Right, yeah, I mean, the criteria was pretty simple, was you had, just had to be a business in good standing, certain number of employees and, and revenue loss, you know, we're going to adjust the revenue, the number of employees down, we're going to adjust the revenue loss percentage down. I don't think, you know, there was a couple of them that submitted for grants that didn't meet the fifty percent threshold or the employee threshold. Once, once the deadline passed and we had everybody in, we did have them resubmit, and they did, in fact, get a grant anyway, so we were very accommodating, and the process is very simple, it's a very simple grant application.
Yeah, I believe it's only a page and a half, but the, there's only about ten questions.
Any other questions, Commissioner O'Donnell?
And it is on the website, if anybody wanted to take a look at it, we will adjust it and then put another one out, hopefully, if not by the end of the week, the first part of next week.
Mr. President, no, sir, no more questions, and thank you for the opportunity, and staff, thank you for providing the information.
Commissioner Davis?
I'm good, thanks.
Commissioner Burns?
Yes, thank you, I, at this time, as same as the last meeting, I'll abstain from this vote, only because the, you know, my family owning one of the businesses in town that, you know, benefit, could benefit from this, I just personally feel like I should probably stay out of that vote.
I don't have anything to, to add to anything, um, I need a motion to keep the small business grant monies held in place here at the town.
I'll make a motion to accept the mayor and staff recommendation to leave the remaining seventeen thousand dollars in Fund Two, to open another round of grant money funding to businesses. Is that good?
Yes.
I'll second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, second by Commissioner Davis. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? One abstain? Motion carries, four, zero, to one.
Thank you. Agenda item number four, we will bring back to the board if approved in November.
So I, agenda item number four has been postponed to November. Agenda item number five, holding a public hearing and adoption of the proposed ordinance twenty-dash-twenty-oh-eight subdivision amendment.
Yes, and you have the paper before you?
I am going to call the, the meeting to order for the public hearing, for, for the ordinance of twenty-dash-oh-eight. So we are open for the hearing, and staff is going to present something now.
Zach, I'll turn this one over to Zach.
Yes, so, thank you, Mr. President, this public hearing was advertised in the Frederick News Post on September fifteenth, two thousand twenty. Also briefly, I wanted to mention here that the Planning Commission recommended approval of ordinance twenty-twenty-dash-zero-eight at their August thirty-first, two thousand twenty meeting, with the following comments, the Planning Commission agrees that playground meeting with the following comments, um, the Planning Commission agrees that playgrounds and/or recreation areas, uh, should be provided by the developer for all future residential subdivisions, and number two, um, the fees set forth in Town Code Section sixteen, sixteen one hundred should be removed and set by, uh, policy, just like our other fees are, are set. Um, staff is recommending approval of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero eight as is tonight, then, uh, if the board would like, we can bring this, uh, bring this back. Um, comment number one, the Planning Commission for the playing, the playgrounds and recreation, we'll bring this amendment back in the next few months to incorporate, um, that and also the fees, um, change. I need some more time to research, um, pocket parks, and I reached out to MML, they got some information back to me, I just need a couple more months to get this prepared, I've been slammed with the, um, MS four report and other, um, development reviews. So I'm asking for approval of this tonight, and that's my presentation.
Thank you, Zach. Are there any questions, uh, for Zach at this time, or any of the board members?
Yes.
Mister Ritz?
If, if we have the potential of going back and doing some more, um, research to change it yet again, wh- why, why such the rush this evening to approve it as is?
Um, so the main reason is, we're getting a lot of developments, um, that are proposed, and I, um, requesting approval tonight so we can get cleaner plans and have, um, those corporate, those, uh, changes incorporated, especially the buffering landscaping, um, proposal, just in order to protect, uh, residential zones from higher density uses.
Hypothetically speaking, I guess, we, we don't foresee any development, new development other than what we already have in development, um, that would even relate to this new playground recreation section that's not being put forth in the ordinance, correct?
Yeah, so the only one that I foresee is the Emmett Ridge Two, however, that, um, I don't think that's going to come in until well into next year, even, if it does.
Okay.
You could conditionally approve, um, this ordinance with a deadline of when the, um, park section would be updated, so you could conditionally approve it with the, um, idea of having the playground section or recreation section updated by, um, such-and-such a date.
What's a reasonable timeframe on that, um, Mister Golden?
Well, uh, I have to bring it to the board, and then you have to submit it to the Planning Commission for review, and then it has to come back to the board, that's going to be three months in itself.
Yeah.
So I, I, I reckon, I, I asked to not have a deadline, but I promise that I'm going to start working on it as soon as possible.
Or you could conditionally approve it without a deadline, um, and that was something that, that I can manage, but I would recommend in approving this and, because everything, we're getting all these, these plans and ideas that are coming in, and we don't want to get caught off by, caught off guard by one that we don't even know about yet.
Yeah. I have.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Mister.
No, I was just going to say I have nothing further, um, I'll pass it over if anyone else has any questions or concerns, but you, you had something you were going to add.
Oh, I was just going to say, this is going to provide a lot cleaner plans and a lot, um, we're basically bringing the subdivision ordinance, development ordinance into the, um, you know, twentieth century, or the twenty-first century, so it's over thirty years old.
Got it, okay.
Mister President, may I, uh?
Mister O'Donnell?
Ask a question, okay, but, Mister Ritz, thank you for your advocacy on this issue, Mister Golden, thank you for following through on this. Um, I, I understand we're running into a wall of, uh, accountability, in that Mister Golden's being pulled many different ways with his, uh, with, with his items to, to address. Um, my, my concern is, first of all, uh, the Emmett Ridge Two piece, um, what causes you to think that we won't see it until twenty twenty-one, just curiously? Like, well, we, you seem to have confidence in that?
Yeah, I do, um, there are hundreds of thousands of dollars of improvements that are required for that development, for example, a ten-inch water line along the entire length of the property, and also Irish Town Road improvements and sewer improvements. Um, so there's been probably a half a dozen, um, contractors, developers that have placed, um, holds on the property, you put a deposit down, and then you have so many days due diligence, um, there's been at least six that have done that so far, and every single one's backed down after, you know, they're aware of the improvements that are required there, because, um, there's just not enough money to be made in that development with the two roads being put in, and, you know, developers want to make a maximum profit, so, uh, there's a potential development that's going to be coming in, um, that will have federal funds behind it in order to fund the property, and also state and, uh, county funds, so I think they will be coming in next year, when the next grant round opens up for those federal grants.
Now, with, w- w- with that being discussed, um, so these grant sources or these, these, uh, fund sources from government agencies, um, will this be a, a form of public housing or subsidized housing or low-cost or affordable, how, how would one frame that?
Yeah, it's going to be, um, low-income housing.
Okay, um, so, uh, again, with that in mind, um, I guess moving, moving in a different direction, uh, from the board members, is, is there any concern, in, in my view, I mean, I, obviously, I do want to see it tonight, we don't have the language, I get that, but, um, in a straw poll, I'd be curious to see if other board members, uh, are, stand behind this, I, I, I sense that Mister Ritz does, um, but asking a neighborhood to have a community park, a pocket park, um, you know, I'll, I'll ask you guys, Mister Davis, do you, would you support an idea like this at a future time? If, if I could, if you don't mind my asking you now, and of course, you don't have to answer that.
Uh, yeah, I think I do, um, um, unless somebody can tell me a reason not to.
Sure, respectable, understood. Mister Sweeney, just curiously?
I, I don't have a problem with this time, no.
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you. Um, and, uh, Mister Burns, any thoughts?
Uh, uh, after listening, after listening to what everybody else has kind of said, my only thought behind it is, much like how we, uh, with the cell towers and wanting to have something in place in case of, um, that's how I kind of see this right now, is that if we at least have this in place, so if something does spring up quickly within the next month or two, if this is a three-month process, at least we have something in place that is, as Mister Golden said, twenty-first century versus something that's thirty years old, so, uh, obviously, we want to address this further, but having something in place further, uh, to at least have guidance, um, uh, I, I'm, I'm well for.
Terrific, okay, um, I, I appreciate you all sharing your opinions. Um, my, my question kind of is, um, Mister Golden, in a perfect world, four months?
Yeah, if it's okay with the mayor and Kathy, I think I can get something to you by the December meeting to forward on to the Planning Commission for, uh, January meeting and back to you February.
That would be exciting. Okay, and then, and personally, I don't stand in the way of the ordinance tonight being passed, I'm sorry if, if someone perceived it that way, I, I just, I, I really think there's value to having these, uh, these parks and communities as they, they build, uh, they build relationships, and they build community.
I, yeah, I think I found a really good ordinance as, as well, um, MML sent me a bunch over, and basically, it's going to be an amendment to the, um, adequate public facilities ordinance, and then we would have to remove some language from the subdivision ordinance, because we don't want to charge them a fee and then require them to put a park in. So let, let's let me do some more research on that, and I'll try to get something, if the mayor's okay with it and Kathy's okay with it, um, get something to you at the December meeting.
Thank you all.
Reasonable, yes.
Thank you. Mister Mayor?
Yeah, it's, it's my understanding that these, um, pocket parks will be HOA, um, supported, and, um, uh, we have one concern from Northgate, talking to them, that, um, a lot of people from the northern part of the county use their, not the county, uh, of town, use their park and their, and, uh, like every, everybody, the concern is they're laboring under, um, fees, how to disperse the money, so, um, I've asked Mister Golden just to at least consider, and Kathy, if, if they would please consider that, if, if this is built out, that that, that, that project, um, uh, do something to support the Northgate one, uh, some contribution, because it's, I, it, it's, it, we don't want them to go upside down on that, it's a really attractive park, they're taking care of it, but lots of people are using it, and, and they also have some vandalism in there, that's all I'm going to say.
Any other questions? Hearing none? Is there any public comment? Any public comment, Matty? Zach, was there any public comment, do you know?
No, sir.
Okay. Hearing none? We'll close the public comment part of it. Now, well, I think we already deliberated, all right. Is there any more discussion on this matter before we go on to, uh, making a motion? Hearing none, I need a motion to accept the twenty dash oh eight.
Commissioner, can you do number seven first?
Once the board.
Motion to end the public hearing.
Okay, we're going to end it first before we vote.
Right.
Okay. I'm sorry. Okay, I'm calling the, uh, public hearing closed.
Need a motion.
I need a motion from a commissioner, please.
I'm, I make a motion to close the public hearing portion of this.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns, second by Commissioner Ritz, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any ayes? Motion carries, five to zero. Okay, I need a motion to accept ordinance twenty dash oh eight.
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance twenty dash oh eight as written at this time, not following the recommendation of the Planning Commission regarding the developer responsible for playgrounds or recreation and fees in Section sixteen point sixteen point one hundred, which will be addressed at a later date.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, is there a second?
I second that motion.
Second by Commissioner Burns. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
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 Ayes? Motion carries, five to zero. Next agenda, number, number, item number six.
Yes, so, um, this is for the zoning amendment.
Let me call the hearing to order.
Right.
For ordinance twenty dash oh nine, first there, um, Zach, and then, uh, then we'll go on to, uh, staff presentation. Do you need a time? Okay. Go ahead, Zach, I called the meeting to order.
Sir, um, this public hearing was advertised in the Frederick News Post on September fifteenth, twenty twenty, the Planning Commission recommended approval of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero nine at their August thirty-first, twenty twenty meeting with the following comments, Section seventeen oh eight two thirty A three, um, street lighting fixtures, when required for safety considerations, the words should be changed from may to shall, be controlled by photo cells, uh, for dusk-to-dawn operations, and number two, Section seventeen twenty thirty, any use permitted in the, um, there was a, a, uh, error there, I put general commercial B two, it actually should have been neighborhood commercial B one, um, district, as well as the following uses, um, both recommended changes, um, by the Planning Commission have been made to the ordinance in front of you, and, um, we are recommending approval of this tonight, and that's my presentation.
Thank you, Zach. Any questions for, um, the planner at this time?
No, just thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Hearing no, uh, questions, I am going to go on to public comment. Any public comment, Matty? No?
I don't have any public comment on my end either.
Hearing no, no, anymore, and, no, not, no more to present, and no public comment, I will close the public comment part of it. Any, any more deliberation between the commissioners?
No, I, I just wanted to make a statement for transparency's sake, um, so everybody's aware, when we deliberated over these during the last planning meeting, um, I did abstain from voting on them, knowing that it would be coming back to the board, so I, I didn't double vote on any of these, just, just for a matter of record.
Anything else from any of the commissioners? Hearing none, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, if it was. Need a second?
I second the motion.
Second by Commissioner Burns?
Thank you.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any ayes?
Aye.
Motion carries, five to zero. Oh, sorry, I went ahead, oh well. All right, now what we got, um, setting the agenda for the next meeting?
Need to vote, actually, on the.
Yeah, you need to vote on it.
Ordinance, you voted to close.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The hearing, these are confusing, because we never do them, um.
Okay, now I need a motion to accept the ordinance twenty dash oh nine as presented. Commissioner Ritz?
Sure, I'll make that motion to accept ordinance twenty dash oh nine as presented.
Need a second?
I second the motion.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, second by Commissioner Burns, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, five to zero. All righty, sent it, now we're setting the agenda for next meeting, Kathy?
All right, so, uh, just a reminder, we have, um, a special workshop set for, and I know I had the wrong date on one of the emails I sent out, um, October nineteenth, twenty twenty, at seven thirty PM, for the discussion and workshop to review the salary compensation analysis survey. Um, again, if you have any special data that you want for that evening, or any special questions for the consultant, um, please make sure you get them to me, uh, a couple days ahead of time, so he has time to, to gather the intel, or the data, excuse me, uh, and then I will, there may be a need for a closed session after that workshop for an update related to the East Emmitsburg Industrial Park Two. So that would be October nineteenth workshop.
Okay.
November second, town meeting, agenda item number one will be an SHA presentation on the traffic congestion at the square.
By SHA?
By SHA.
All right.
Number two will be the approval of bid to complete a preliminary engineering report, an environmental report on the water system for consideration. Number four would be to hold a wait. Number four would be to hold a wastewater treatment plant annexation public hearing and adoption of resolution 2020-11R for consideration. Number five would be the salary compensation analysis for consideration. And then I have two administrative business items. Number one would be the drawing of the census winner of the iPad and then proclamation for MML Municipal Government Works Month. That's all I have.
I have a question for Commissioner Davis.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes. I thought that he had an item he was thinking of for the special workshop night. It's escaping me what it was.
Salary?
In addition.
With our property on West Lincoln Avenue.
That was it.
Has to be a public meeting. That may have to be a public meeting, discuss that.
I mean, the workshop is a public meeting.
That's it.
The workshops are public meetings. They're typically less formal though with only the public comment available and then mayors and commissioner comments.
Yeah. Just to tell you what I was thinking about or looking at, our property up on West Lincoln where the church is now, I understand the church is interested in buying that. If they are, I think we should really take a hard look at that. Take the funding we get from the church property or the building property and look at fixing our downtown parking by purchasing the lot on South Seton Avenue if it's for sale. That's what I'm looking at. You know, everything that we've talked about over the last 20 years about the town, it always comes back to parking and we never, we never do anything about it. So, that's just me.
Just for record, I want to announce that I own that, my wife and I own that property and we'll do everything, wherever you go, we understand.
It would be a nice place for municipal parking lot. This is in the center of town.
The mayor and Zach and myself are working at some parking options and we have been working with Pastor John on his property and we're absolutely willing to work with Pastor John if he's willing to buy the lot. I know that he's come into some issues buying some property from Lincoln on the park. He needed some additional land and the conversations have stalled.
Yeah.
But I know he's still looking to do it. So, we're just kind of waiting for him to decide what he wants to do on that aspect of it. But mayor, Zach and I are working on some other parking options and we actually had in our conference call with State Highway, they are researching some grants for us as well for municipal parking.
Great.
Ms. Willetts?
Yes.
Hi, Commissioner O'Donnell. If discussions move forward related to town purchases related to elected owned property, would it be possible for staff to provide us some ethics, law and guidelines related to how we manage something like that should a circumstance like that arise?
That's not the path that we're headed in.
No, 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 I understand that. That's why I'm saying conditionally. Should something like this occur, it would be useful, I think, for elected, that way, everybody's on the same page and there's transparency in the process. I very clearly hear the mayor say, you know, he's announced his position. He's saying he's not involved as well he should. But if any of us find ourselves in a situation similar, if this conversation goes forward related to something like this where it's elected owned property, it would be appreciated if guidelines would come forward from staff. And I'll leave it at that.
Right now, you can go look at the ethics code and to kind of, as a refresher. And then obviously, that would be talks that we would have to have with the town attorney and then, you know, make sure that it is done ethically and per our code. But we are working on some options.
Okay, thank you. Easy way out if you just got donated. Just saying.
I'll take that home.
It's a tough crowd here. It's a tough crowd.
Are we talking about that that night or not? I guess, I was just curious.
I mean, I don't know. I mean, we can, but there's not, other than what we just talked about tonight, I don't know that we'd have anything additional in November since we're waiting on Pastor John related to the building.
Okay.
The town owns that building outright.
Step one would have to, the board would have to approve an appraisal of the property.
Right.
Commissioner Sweeney, quick question?
Commissioner Burns?
In regards to parking, and I think Commissioner Davis might have some input on this as well as everyone else, what are, I mean, obviously, we don't want to lose any parking spots in town. You know, obviously, we're always trying to gain more parking spots. The parking spots surrounding the laundromat and the other cross streets that cut across Main Street, has there been any discussions or anything about, I don't want to say losing a spot or backing those up. I know it becomes a bit of a hazard when people are trying to pull out if cars are parked close to the edge of the street there. A lot of people struggle to see and I hate to see accidents. I know there's been responses by the fire department to accidents there in the past. Is that something that would have been discussed in the past with the town or anything of that nature? I know, I don't know, Commissioner Davis's thoughts on it because I know he pulls out of that as well, but just wanted to see what the feedback was on that because if we were talking about parking.
Just the answer, Commissioner Davis, for me?
Yeah, they are dangerous spots there. And Lord knows, we hate to take anything away before we gain something. But that would be another reason for us to look at additional parking so we could get rid of those dangerous intersections.
They are really, really, in my opinion, dangerous too. You cannot see, when you come out, you have to pull almost out into the lane to see out of any of the alleys coming out, the whole way up West Main or East Main, even north and south Seton, you have to pull out to see. I don't know how far our property goes behind the laundromat there on the Bollinger property. How far does the town limits go past in the alley, North Alley?
Fence, fence.
Is the Bollinger property come all the way to the road or is there room to put parking on the side?
The fence, that's still outside the town.
I didn't know how far the property line went out.
Off the top of my head, I don't know.
Not too far out. It's pretty much the pavement there.
Oh, it's the pavement. That would be a nice place for a parking lot too right there because it's flat, like two round area.
Well, that's kind of why I brought it up. If we're going to press the parking issue and obviously try to develop new parking, I think that's, you know, one of the concerns that, why we need more parking in town is, you know, from a safety standpoint as far as people trying to cross those alleys and pull out and things of that nature.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Willetts, I just going to excuse herself for, there's a family. Well, we'll leave it there, okay?
Thank you.
I'm going to go out in the hall for a minute.
So, I don't know if I have them all written down. Do you have them all written down what you have because I don't know if I missed one or not.
Yeah, I can go over them real quick.
Okay. On the workshop, we have, are we just doing the ordinance or do we add, are we adding the CC, Christ Community Church to it?
I just have the discussion and workshop to review the salary compensation survey.
All right.
With the potential of a closed session following, which we can put that information out at a later date.
Okay. Closed session following. Okay. Everybody okay with that? Okay, for the agenda, we will go with SHA as the first one?
Yes.
Approval of the water system?
Bids for the water lines, yes.
Is that for the?
I skipped one. I'm glad you're going back over this.
I knew I had an empty spot there.
One other, I apologize.
It's approval of the bids for the, is that Wayneport Pike?
For the water lines, no, it would be DePaul Street, North Seton Avenue.
On DePaul Street, North Seton, okay.
I did skip one.
Okay, that'll be three. Okay. Resolution 2020-R would be the fourth one for the water.
So, I have, number one is SHA presentation on the traffic congestion at the square. Number two would be the approval of bids for the PER and the ER for the water lines. That would be DePaul Street and North Seton Avenue. The one that I left off, which would be number three, are ordinances related to the financing of the Creamery Road Pump Station for consideration.
Pump stations, number three?
Right. Number four would be the wastewater treatment annexation, public hearing and resolution 2020-11R.
Number five, a salary compensation?
Yes.
That's it for the agenda?
Right. And I have two, the two admin items.
The drawing of the census?
Right.
And proclamation for MML?
Yes.
Everyone okay with, or consent, do I have consent from everybody to accept the agenda as presented?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I need a motion to close the meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion to close the October 5 meeting at 9:34.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns, our second.
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Ritz. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you guys for your meeting and Commissioner O'Donnell, you'll be running the next one.
Thank you. Here we go.